So I'm calling the Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, meeting of the Easton Metal Planning Board to order. Those in attendance are?
Keith Anderson.
Bill Fonseca.
Russell Denver.
Sandra Cher Swallow.
Robert Trow.
And Rob, what's all playing director?
Yeah, I need to ask if there's any audience who might be recording in this meeting. If so, please state your name and the method you're recording the meeting.
Reminder publishing audio.
Thank you. First item is approval of the minutes of October 7th, 2025.
So moved second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That matter passes. So Mr. Clark?
Case cases site dash 2025 dash zero five and SP dash 2025 dash zero eight. Request for site plan review to construct a 1,575 square foot addition, the commercial building and a special permit to alter and enlarge a non-conforming building structure at 180 Shaker Road, such as partial ID dash 17 dash zero located in the district app. 180 Shaker Road, Easton Metal Mass, zero one zero two eight.
So before we get started, so our planning director, we have a question for you, collective question.
Yep.
How can we approve a site plan review? To alter or enlarge a non-conforming structure? Doesn't that have to go to the zoning board?
Nope. So because the building is currently a non-conforming structure because it encroaches in the front setback and because it exceeds lots coverage by about 2%, I believe. You can just approve it with a special permit because of Article three of our zoning by law. So actually there's a state law that allows for not conforming use and structures to be approved via special permit from the planning board. If they were creating a new non-conformity, which they're not in this petition, then they would need a variance from the zoning board. But because the non-conformities exists in order to alter or enlarge that non-conformity, they just need your approval, which is totally acceptable under state law and the Easton Meadow zoning regs. And we've had a petition in the past that were done a similar way as well.
I was under the understanding that you can't make an existing non-conforming building more non-conforming.
So it depends on the interpretation of the zoning codes. So usually if you're creating a new non-conformity, you're not allowed to do that. If you're altering or expanding existing one, then you can get approval from the planning board as long as you make the finding that's that's expansion is not more detrimental.
Detrimental, right?
The neighboring area.
Not going closer to the road or things like that.
Or if you feel that them expand the building and take away the parking spots there is not going to be detrimental, then you have to make that finding in order to approve it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, makes sense.
So it's up to your discretion. It's a discretionary use. It's a special permit. It's up to you to decide whether or not if on this case it makes sense to make that finding. And you have to obviously take testimony like you usually do, but that's just clarifying it a little bit better for you.
Okay. So I'd like to have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hi.
Hello, how are you guys?
Good. So tell us what you have in mind here.
So the idea is a proposed warehouse addition for Mr. Maruka's business, which is tray olive. Uh, you know, seller of olive oil, balsamic vinegar, gift baskets, things like that. About 95% of the businesses is online. Uh, there is a small retail portion of the building, uh, which shows on the site plan. Uh, basically he needs the warehouse space for, for inventory and inventory management. Um, and hence why we're here.
Okay.
We don't have a visual.
What's going on today?
This is existing. Place is back here. This is proposed. We're proposing just extending it straight back. Still maintain what we're here. These parking places, but we still meet the
working requirements.
Did it?
Traffic going in.
Oh, the deliveries that they're going to be expecting. They get about a delivery a week or so. That's not them.
Dinner thing.
Okay. There you go. Question?
And existing business that's been for, been there for a long time, very low minimum traffic.
Yeah. Parking spots stay within the, not there yet, but parking spots deleting.
So the parking spots are, I'm actually showing you, it might be easier if full size print here.
That's okay.
So so the existing spots here will erase to the proposed addition, which is going over the impervious parking lot already. Um, these spots currently are just being used for pallet storage for, for the inside, um, inventory. But remaining parking place.
But that's easier to see.
They still comply with So how many cars you have parked there on average, would you say during the day?
Um, there's probably three cars, four cars in and out.
I've been using most of those cases anyways.
No, no.
Yeah. Okay. So there is a request for two waivers. One is the waiver of a traffic study. Give her of a stormwater. Have a motion to waive each.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then Rob, do you want to walk us through other conditions?
Yeah, sure. Um, so there are actually two other things you have to do waivers for. I just realized that you have to approve one of their planning data is not having topographic data. And then you have to approve their waiver for building plans via the special permit requirement. I don't know if you want to make that motion now, Mr. Chair.
Um, someone make that a moment.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, hearing none, that passes. And
I guess to go back to your other comment about conditions. So the only thing I would recommend making a condition for both permits. So they had forgotten to put the location of the relocated trash receptacles. So I think a condition of both permits should be prior to filing with registry deeds. You have to contest amend those plans, show the new location of dumpsters with the enclosed fencing as required in the bylaw. And then for the special permits, I don't know if this is something you want to discuss to board, if you want to put any conditions on times of deliveries, whether it be for to the business or for trash, up to you. If you don't want to, that's totally fine. But I wanted to bring that up as a discussion point.
So I mean, I did talk to you about that this afternoon. I mean, there's like really no residential area in immediate area of the business.
When do they typically come now?
I was just going to say, you know, when do you typically get deliveries or?
It's during business hours, so between, you know, nine and five.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, seems like you don't want to do that. So I, I just recommend doing that first condition for both permits about updating the plans to include the trash receptacles. And then once we get that, um, obviously I'll draft the decision documents after the fact, but we'll still expect those before they can file.
Is that going to reduce the parking?
Uh, I don't, would that reduce the parking, Mike?
No, 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 it shouldn't reduce parking. We have the corner of the parking lot as a box off. That's where we will propose.
Okay. I guess another question to snow storage. Where do you guys typically plow the snow on the property? Is it just to the woods back there?
Yeah, thirteen parking spaces.
Yeah. Yeah. So those, that additional condition about fixing the plans of a motion to approve, or do I have a motion? Have a second.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. So that passes. So I'll take a motion to approve the special permit, site plan, approve the site plan review and special permit.
You have to close.
Got to close in public hearing.
Oh, thank you. Close the closed public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
You have to adopt the findings of both the site plan review and the special permit and then approve both.
Okay.
So moved.
So I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
We got it.
We're getting there. Been a long day.
Yes.
Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. So now am I at the main motion?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. You want to make it?
So moved.
Now let's have a motion, motion to approve the site plan review, uh, site plan and special permit associated with the petition for 180 Shaker Road, Easton Metal Mass.
So moved.
Thank you. Okay. Any discussion?
I just, I just want to say, I was under the understanding all the years in a planning board that you couldn't make a pre-existing non-conforming bu- building more non-conforming.
Learn something new every day.
This actually makes a better use of the
It does. When you think about it, it does.
Yeah. All right. All in favor say aye.
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 Matter passes. Thank you.
Guys.
I'll reach out to you guys later in the week.
Yeah.
And I'll have plans. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you. Sir Clark?
Hey, sites dash 2025 dash zero six, request for site plan review to construct a fifty, 5,740 square foot commercial office, office building at 95 Shaker Road, assesses partial ID, 28 dash two dash zero, located industrial zone for district applicant Stephen L. Graham and trustee of Schillingford Trust, 35 Industrial Drive, Suite One, Easton Metal Mass, zero one zero two eight.
He was in South Halle last night and he's here tonight. Let's see, probably twice in one day.
Other miles.
Good evening.
Good evening. That for us? Sure are. Uh, wait. So we need to open a public hearing?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Caught that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, good evening for the record. I'm Rob Lebec. Marla Beck Associates. Here with me this evening is Steve Graham. He is the project opponent for the proposed project at 95 Shaker Road.
I must note that also it's, uh, our Leveson Associates care of Nina Fazio.
Right.
Permitting coordinator.
Yes.
Well, remember Nina's. Spectacular. Want to point that out?
He's still spectacular. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, so we're here this evening. Uh, as Rob had read off, uh, we're proposing an 11,480 square foot. I think that's the square footage, building, two stories. Um, Steve has a tenant, uh, for the proposed building. It is the business bank. Um, they are a banking, it's a financial institution that does work directly with businesses. Um, they are going to be occupying the first story of the building. The second story, uh, is built or contemplated and built on spec at this point. Um, we're also showing that as office space. So we've done some calculations related calculations specifically. This type of use fires five spaces per thousand. Um, that the five spaces per thousand is pretty typical for like a medical office use, similar to what you might see over in Commerce Street type of use sets. Um, in this particular case, the financial institution will have just a few, um, of their own staff that will be occupying the building. Um, as you are aware, in this current or modern work world, a lot of people will be working remote. Um, so there's a percentage that would be working remote. Uh, in addition to that, um, we, you know, we have not identified a tenant for the second story and certainly would be, uh, willing to come back and discuss, as we have a tenant for the second story, discuss that with the planning board. But right now we're requesting a few waivers related to parking, um, and traffic based on the kind of the, uh, I don't want but minimal, um, uh, you know, generation of both, uh, traffic need, uh, and traffic itself. I'm sorry, parking need and traffic itself. So we are proposing, uh, 38 parking spaces. calculate it based on the five per thousand, it would be 58 parking spaces required. Um, so we're requesting a 20 space waiver. Um, you're, you're also going to see on our site plan on the right-hand side or the north side of the proposed building. Uh, we're showing an access way. Uh, Mr. Graham does own the properties to the rear. Um, we are contemplating ideas for that area. Uh, we understand that there's some zoning, um, in downtown that might be past future. Uh, so we're kind of interested in seeing what comes out, what the town comes up with. Um, but for now that's kind of a placeholder. We didn't want to cut ourselves off from the rear. Um, and that would provide a potential access point in the future. So just to orienters due to our site plan. Um, the existing white building at 95, right about back here, that would be demolished. Okay?
So what is that currently?
So retail antique type of space.
The living room?
The living room.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So you're not touching the building in front that is part of Maple Court.
Correct.
Where the barber shop is and Chaplain is.
That's like kitchens is
That's staying, that's staying there. That building is staying.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, that's just, uh, that is right here. Okay. I'll, I'll bring up my existing conditions. You'll see a little better. So that's right here, um, the existing white home. And then the other buildings will remain behind that. But right now, um, that home would need to be removed. Um, we have a stormwater management system per the regulations. Um, and we collect the stormwater from the roof, the parking lots. We have a, uh, a surface infiltration basin in the back. We would have loved to be able to put that underground. We do have some shallow groundwater. If you're familiar with the area, there's some shallow groundwater. So it requires us to have that surface base in the back, much to Mr. Graham's chagrin. Uh, so we do our best to actually, uh, dress that up and make that look as nice as possible. We did locate it in the rear. Um, as things are contemplated in the back, we'll, you know, potentially dovetail into how that's been. Um, any questions on the general site plan for now?
So the primary access into the location is Shaker Road?
That is correct. Yep. So there'd be two curb cuts, two, uh, full surface curb cuts. And just to give you some reference, so here's the lot itself. That's the, the building. This is the existing conditions plan. That's the existing. These are the two existing buildings. Those would be raised and the building is going out in front to the parking lot area. Um, it would be essentially reconfigured completely.
So Rob, can you go back? So I'm, I'm lost here.
Sorry. So, uh, existence additional.
Where Shaker Road?
Sure.
The bottom.
Bottom of the plan, Shaker Road here.
Okay.
Okay.
Where's Maple, where's Maple Court?
Uh, Maple Court is here.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so of the property, that's the white, uh, turned side gable roof, white building there with a, with a retail.
Yeah.
Yep. And then this is the existing parking. Demo, missing building, demo the parking lot. Build a new building, the footprint, just the footprint, course story is 5,742 feet. We have 13 parking spaces along this side. We have handicap spaces along the building where there are eight spaces. And we find seven to the north, also with another handicap space there in anticipation of the potential technical stairs, those types of things. And depending on how we handle that use. We have dark sky compliant lighting that we're proposing within the property. These are the light pole locations. We have a photometric plan that also provides information regarding that. Here's the grading plan. Um, the pro- parking lot as it exists now slopes towards, uh, Shaker Road. We're going to kind of mimic the pre-development conditions, which is generally a requirement. We have a couple grade breaks basically here, here and here. So the water splits like this, like this and like this. Uh, we pick some of the stormwater up in front. We bring it to the back, bring all the roof water to the back, handle that behind the building. Um, we'll work with Mr. Graham on, uh, landscaping and trying to make that as practically possible. Uh, this is kind of more detail on utilities. Right now we're looking at bringing water. Um, this would require a fire suppression line. So we'd bring a plastic fire line to the building because it's over 7,500 square feet. Um, we're also dealing with gas, which we, is available. We'd be bringing power across the street, dropping it down when we get on the site. Pretty straightforward from that, in that regard, landscaping. Um, we'll have a lawn panel at the front of the, of the building. Will be foundation plantings, uh, along and around all, uh, four sides of the building. We have trees that are proposed throughout, you know, uh, we have, uh, red maple and a few other, uh, uh, selections. Our dumpster, I don't think I mentioned this, is kind of in the back corner. Again, financial use, a lot of paper, maybe a couple milk cartons here and there, but generally, uh, shouldn't be too impactful to the use.
Questions? Yeah. So I work for a company that is across the street.
Oh, okay.
At 96 Shaker. And then you've got the beauty salon. Then you've got the animal cook, veterinarian hospital right there. So how are you coordinating access and egress? Cause there's a lot of access egress nets short area right there, and you're not that far away, but I, I guess I don't want them both. You know, one's going out, the other one's trying to come in and sure you run into that. So have you take, taken that into consideration?
Uh, we have, um, to the extent possible, obviously our building location is driving, also our access aisles and our parking. So our curb cut as it exists now, um, is right here. You can, it's hard to see, but right, right where my finger is, that's our existing curb cut. And we're shifting it ever so slightly to the south. So it'll be slightly farther away. This is a right turn or a left turn in to the plaza across the street. And then it's here. So our entrance is slightly farther away. So probably a slight improvement over existing conditions. And then we are not directly across from any curb cuts with the northerly access point.
And then how close is that driveway, the one to the left to Handen Engineering?
Oh, this is the Handen Engineering property line, and this is their edge of pavement, um, to their, to their parking lot. So I'm approximate, but 35 to 40 feet from the, from point of curvature to point of curvature on the radiator.
Uh, thanks.
Rob?
Yes.
Seems like asking for 20 less spaces is a, is a big ask. Can't you take that triangle in the back and push all that back a little bit and put some more parking spaces along that, like to the right of the dumpster? Can't you move that back a little bit?
Yeah, it's a good question.
Uh, that's, that's a lot of spaces it asks for.
It is on paper. Uh, so we have, we do have the benefit. A lot of times we don't have a tenant. Uh, in this particular case, we do have the benefit of community. And the nature of the business on the first floor is that they will have approximately, is it 12 to 14 people at maximum? Is that correct?
I, I would say 12 at maximum, but probably more like six.
And then they, they have, they don't get typical foot traffic in their lobby that you would expect because it's a business banking operation. So you're not going to get the, the people, you know, with the bank books coming off the street, you know, the normal, uh, personal banking folks. Um, so they are a fairly light user. Um, again, we don't have a tenant for the, their use, but we're actually thinking that they are way over parked right now with the first story use only. The second story use is really why we're showing the rest of the parking. Um, so there's different variable, you know, parking variations throughout, you know, the local communities that we work in. Some are, you know, one per 300, an office space sometimes is, you know, one per 250. There's, there's a, there's a bunch of variations. Um, in, in actual practice, we feel very confident in the tenant actually, which is probably more important, feels very confident that they will not be you know, they frankly not even, will not even be using the um, and again, as we go into the future, um, without sounding disintenuous, we want to make sure that we're not uh, the land to the rear provides a potential, really nice potential opportunity for the town, uh, for Mr. Graham. Uh, we're looking at some of the zoning that might be passed, but we want to try to earmark that as much as possible.
Doc, and what's a parking space of 16 feet long?
Uh, nine by 18 is your typical parking space. These are 20 by nine, nine by 20. I think it's
So you can't, you can't take up 18 more feet going, cause here's the, here, in my, in my mind, having done this for like 17 years, you give it to one person, you gotta give it to everybody.
Yeah.
So that's a lot of parking spaces. You get a restaurant that says, well, I'm not really that busy or whatever. There's more, more, uh, you know,
Takeout.
Takeout and stuff like that. So I I mean, I would like to see you put some along here where the dumpster is to the right and move, move your other drainage stuff back a little bit.
That would probably, in the future plans, that would probably kill a number of potential housing units, um, just conceptually.
It's, it's five per thousand. So, you know.
Yeah. I mean, so
With the zoning
Obviously that waiver is discretionary. We feel confident that, um, this project will function quite well without that. Um, this again is a financial use. It's not a restaurant use. You're not going to have in, in
I, I understand, I understand that, but I have to say yes to something that I might have to say yes to later.
Right.
And you know, it's, if the land is there, the land is there to use and it's 18 feet. It's not 50 feet.
And like I say, respectfully, we don't, you know, we need it.
And tenants change.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what are the tenancy changes and it's?
Well, if there was a condition that they had to come back in, I think even if, you know, when the second story tenant comes in, if you wanted to see that, I don't think we have a problem with that condition.
But also there's a process for when, if they do have a tenancy change. Um, typically they would come to the town and get business license. And that's usually when I would flag it and say, okay, you don't have enough parking spaces to accommodate the new use. And that's when they would have to submit a parking plan with me. And I would have to review it and decide whether or not it would have to go to the planning board, which if it's more than 10 spaces, it usually has to go to the planning board. And that's when they would be another site planner view, just to add the extra parking spaces. So if anything, you're kind of placing a burden on them to have to come back in the future by granting them temporary relief now, if they're going to stay with these tenants that are coming in. Uh, so
If they did that, they wouldn't be able to add in the future.
They would if they submit, admit, if they submit an amended site plan. So they'll have to do another site planner review hearing with new plans showing the increase in parking. So if you were to approve the waiver now, it would help with this current project. But if a new tenant were to ever come in, even if it's one allowed by rights, it still would apply the parking requirements onto that new tenant. And this would be caught up in building, planning, whoever reviews it would, would notice that. So it is up to your discretion. Again, case by case, just because you approve this request doesn't mean you have to do it for anybody else after the fact. It just depends on the project and what you're willing to do.
Rob, could you gather any more spots in the corners, the square in that triangle, lopsided triangle thing right on the edge of the buildings?
Sure.
Yep. And
Um, with the radiator, um, I mean, is it possible potentially, you know, maybe one here? It cuts down on obviously the, uh, the landscaped islands and, you know, it is a financial institution. We try to want to make it, well, want to make it as attractive as possible. Um, frankly, in a perfect world, we would put the infiltration basin underground and it wouldn't take up as much real estate. On this particular case, if you're familiar, there's a retention pot, long retention pond over here. So you probably never see what dry, right? It's never dry.
Yeah.
So it's one of those situations. So we're, uh, we're doing the best with the soil and, and ground conditions that we have. Um, you know, that said, um, it's really just, you know, punting it away. Um, and if we felt we needed it, we certainly, you know, and again, maybe Steve wants to speak to this. He has had direct contact with the client or the tenant. Um, any, any thoughts there?
The, the only thing I, I'll, I'll mention, just to be clear on the tenant is that this is not a consumer lending institution. So there's no home mortgages or personal loans or auto loans. And the traffic is very, very limited on a, on a daily basis going and out of, of this uh, and it's space.
Can you move the dumpster?
Yeah, probably.
You get a couple more spaces in there.
Yeah, we could probably get two. And if yeah, we can hopefully get, yeah, I think we could at least get two, uh, maybe more depending on the orientation. So they're not backing into each other. But yes, we could do that.
Oh, I, I understand the, that the pressure's on the planning board. And the land is there to put more parking spaces in and take some of the pressure off the planning board. And I know you're looking at the future developments, but you're talking 18 feet of property. You're not talking a lot. And with that, if, if they had the housing density and all that stuff done, would that really make a difference in a future project, 18 feet?
So conceptually, it would probably kill a row of units based on the geometry that's in my head. We've, we've laid it out a couple of different ways. So it, it would probably kill four.
Housing. If you could squeeze in 10 more spaces, I would say absolutely. To me, 20 is a lot.
It's actually impactful. The basin itself, but they weren't happy to see the basin, you know, the project team. So it is impactful. Um, you know, I'm not saying it can't be done. They, they do own the land, but it, it is impactful. If they've, you know, if, if any way we felt we needed it, we certainly wouldn't request the waiver.
Is it possible that we can approve this as is with a plan B if the tenant changes? Is it possible that we can approve this as is with a plan B if the tenant changes? We can find the parking spots by moving the dumpster, taking out the.
Yeah, it's just what Rob. Right, yeah.
So that's that's something.
Plan for the future.
It's down the road.
We just don't want to go back and go like, well, we can't find twenty spaces now because this is what we built. But if you could remove the corners, the dumpster, and then all of a sudden you gather the right spots.
Well, our zoning bylaws design in a way where, um, you know, it's kind of ingrained that any future change were to happen. They kind of have to do the parking spaces unless the board gives them another waiver down the road. But if the use is more impactful than the current lending, business lending, uh, organizations going on the first floor, then you can make the call that, okay. This is going to generate more traffic. Obviously, we can't approve the same waiver. They have to add more parking spaces. So again, I want to stress that it's a case by case sort of thing. So there is process in place to accommodate any future change in tenancy. Which is ingrained to the zoning regs today. I just think that really putting condition on it where they have to come back. With the change of a tenant. I mean, you you could do that if you wanted to. I don't really see it as necessary because we already kind of do that process in town hall between two departments. Um, there's there's procedures in place to kind of accommodate and make them change the site if there's a more impactful business coming in. So that those things exist, I guess.
It's easier for us because he also owns that space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would feel much better if we moved the dumpster, threw a couple more spaces in there.
Any other discussions, Mr. Lebeck?
Oh, good, it's a great project.
Yeah, it's a great project.
It is a great project.
All right, uh, this is a public uh, hearing. Anyone in the audience or by Zoom would like to be heard on this matter? Please raise your hand on Zoom or you want any audience? Okay.
Hi. Hi, my name is John Flynn. I'm the owner of the property next door. Handlin Engineering. We've been there since nineteen fifty-four.
Yep.
Just want to state that uh, we're quite in favor of this project. We think that the work that Mr. Graham has done for the town of Eastlaw Meadow was fantastic. And we know, having looked at that building for a number of years, anything is going to be an improvement. And I certainly appreciate your 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 comments on the, you know, the uh, traffic. On the other side, we certainly see the uh, the line of cars in front of our building, usually around three o'clock, I think, right? Right there, but I don't think this is going to impact that at all.
Okay.
So we're quite in favor of it, and I want to just comment you on your diligence. I was a member of the planning board in Handen for sixteen years. Before starting my service for twenty-one years as on the select board. And I want to say that uh, the way you guys presented, you guys, lady, presented are fantastic. So just want to comment and compliment you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone in the audience or on Zoom like be heard on this matter? Hearing none, I'll take it back to the board, uh, motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Of a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't want to oppose, so the public hearing is closed. I bring it back to the board. Um, on, on, we'll start with the waiver requests. So I see, oh, I had it right here.
It's on the page five.
I've got it, yeah. So there's traffic study. There's a request to waive a traffic. I mean, I know that area very well. I think we all do. So if they're going to come back. You know, with the, with a potential, you know, new tenant and have it reviewed by our planning director. I personally don't see a need for a traffic study.
I agree. You're going to have the line of traffic regardless of.
Yeah, it's. It's already there. It's already there. It's not going anywhere.
All right, so then why don't I kind of a motion to waive the requirement for a traffic study?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing none, that passes. So can you explain the proposed business sign waiver? Mr. Director?
Business sign waiver, um, trying to see where that is.
I thought the all, all signs went to the building inspector anyway.
They do, yeah. I don't see a waiver request in there for that unless I'm looking at the wrong spot.
Um. I've got it right here.
See.
Quest for waiver.
Oh, you know what that is? That's an offer requirement for site plan review. Um, as an application material, um, and also they have to put that in their plans technically, but um. You you could actually approve that request if you wanted to, um. But they do have to come to the building department eventually to get a sign.
Yeah.
Ways.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the waiver.
So moved.
Of a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone oppose? Hearing none, that passes. For off-street parking. Um, can at least start with a motion to approve the waiver request.
Move to approve the the waiver request on off-street parking.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? So I'm, I personally would be okay waiving it because of the condition that Rob indicated.
And I'm thinking the same way because whatever happens, they're coming back.
Yes, and I think it's easier on this board, given that he also owns the, all the abiding property.
Correct.
So, yeah.
So it wouldn't be a condition that we include, but that's something that's already in the zoning text.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's a fail-safe that we have.
Where where would you put the parking if it came back and the second story tenant had to have more spaces? Let's say, saying that your proposed thoughts for later on usage were, that came to fruition, what would you do?
Um, my crystal ball only being so clear. I would, yeah, potentially next to chaplains, there's, you know, they, he controls that building. We'd have to see if there's a way to reconfigure, make it more efficient. Um, kind of shared arrangement type of thing, um.
And how much land is it between your uh, access on the right, uh, between that and Chaplain's building?
Oh, there's not enough for for a road car. I mean, so it would be to the rear of that.
Oh, okay.
Building. You know, to you're kind of connecting the two sites to the rear, you know, at the.
You're going to move the dumpster?
Um, I'm going to do whatever the planning board tells me to do.
What do you think about it?
I mean, I think.
Does it make any difference to you guys?
I mean, there's places you can get the space if you need to.
Yeah, I think so.
The dumpsters, not like you're painting yourself into a corner if you're like this.
But yeah, I mean, again, they're going to be, if something happens, they're coming back.
All right.
We're just approving, let's say, phase one here with with.
Right.
First floor tenant.
The tenant changes.
If the tenant changes or you, you know, you get second floor tenants, then it's coming back anyway, so.
Plan B that we can.
Right, there is a plan B there.
Okay.
Yeah, that that would be over here, more parking would be over here then.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just asking for twenty less spaces. I know someone's going, is is watching or it's going to go, oh, now I can do this. That's the problem.
Yeah, but again, it's. Yeah, fail-safe.
So we have a motion, it's been seconded to waive the off-street parking requirement. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Say nay. Hearing none, no. So. Always walk me through this process, Rob. So. What other conditions do we need to approve as part of the site plan?
Uh, next you have to approve the findings made for site plan review. The standards for review comes out of uh, nine. Afterwards, then you have to discuss and approve additional conditions on top. Lastly, you have to vote on that cell. And it's up to you whether or not you wish to read each individual finding or just approve mid-block.
Uh, no motion to approve the findings as a whole.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, Rob?
So uh, there's three proposed conditions I included uh, for this petition, so. For the site planner view projects are proposing the construction of a new building. And altering the site significantly, um, I'm still including that condition where they have to reach out to the director of planning after construction. Before issuance of certificate of occupancy, uh, to look at the site to visit to make sure it's built according to plan. Um, this has to occur within six months after construction has completed. Uh, and as mentioned here, they cannot get certificate of occupancy until this site visit has been scheduled with the planning department. Um, the other condition proposed includes installing directional signage. It could be signs, could be painted markers on the driveway. Indicating where traffic is going to go in the parking lot area. We understand you have arrows in the plan currently. Those arrows should exist. Or have signage of some sort, we can leave nowhere to go. Uh, and lastly, um, I'm proposing adding a condition where it says any light fixtures on site shall be downcast. And mitigate spilling over onto neighboring properties. It's a very tight area. You don't want light shining onto neighboring properties, even though there's no residential properties nearby. I still think it's good practice for the board to consider. Uh, those are three conditions that you could consider for the petition, up to you.
And would this project qualify for review for the design review committee?
Uh, yeah, technically, because it's a site planner view hearing, um, yeah, it does.
For those who don't know, about six months ago, we brought back the design review committee. Um, I believe if they met and reviewed the initial plans for the assisted living facility.
They did not. So usually the planning board is the authority that calls onto the design review board to meet. And to discuss.
Thought we did that.
I don't think we did for the system like facility.
Well, I I'd like to kind of, I myself would like to, at least start with this one, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if you were to do that, you would have to continue this until after the design review committee meets. Because the way the bylaws written is that you can't approve a site planner view until designer viewpoint does their thing.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's just nerve to keep in mind.
All right, so I'm not going to do that. So you don't need to bring it up.
But moving forward, we could um, identify projects that would trigger it.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to do. Yeah, so just tell us what what materials do you plan on using?
Do you have the details?
Yeah. Well, we haven't finalized materials of construction, but we're um. It it will be tastefully done, I can tell you that. Well, so I I guess I don't want to have my head be bitten off like I did by some people with the Chase Bank. So I would like it to be as tasteful and as um. Reflective of Eastlaw Meadow as possible.
That's think of what Steve's done.
Yeah.
The transportation reflects his desire to have something attractive in the center of Eastlaw Meadow.
Just wanted to.
I would leave it, yeah.
Yep. Okay, so the additional conditions as expressed by Rob do have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Say nay. Hearing none. So now. The site plan um, as presented with the conditions to have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for.
And I'll reach out later this week.
Thank you, yes. Laura George, Mr. Wachilla.
Great. So uh, with fairly quick. Uh, so I have the next four meeting dates till the end of the year. At some point in December, we're probably going to have to. Approve the next set for twenty twenty-six. Uh, I'll probably do that for that December second meeting. So you have a continuance on November fourth, day five, three thirty Chestnut Street. Uh, it will be between from October seventh, twenty twenty-five. Uh, just a heads up, that meeting on November fourth will be held at Eastlaw Meadow High School auditorium. The petition for three thirty Chestnut Street will not start till six thirty. The first half hour of the meeting will be dedicated to, especially with Ken Komiya from Pioneer Valley about the uh, housing production plan update with the town. Um, some updates on some ongoing projects within my.
Can we just be short? Can I can interrupt you? So. So I just want everybody to remember for three thirty Chestnut Street, if we get to the point where. We will be taking a vote. Either in favor or opposed. You should be ready to discuss prior to the vote. The reasons you're using for your decision. So that if this gets appealed and if it goes to the courts, the judge will be able to read the transcript. That says what you considered as part of your vote. You can't just say. Yay or nay and not give a specific reason. So if you remember the four things that Rob put on the poster board. You know, one was specifically, you know, traffic, one was stormwater. I forget the other two, but.
Um. I mean, one place you can look at is if you go into the zoning text available on the town's website, there's a whole section called review criteria. It's uh, I believe it's nine point five, nine point six. Usually those are reasons that you could defend in court for denying a project if they don't meet any of that criteria for whatever reason, even if it's something that's allowed by right, which site plan review is. The same thing applies to special permit. If you look at those on your own time, I do include them in every project report I give to you. So you could just review them right there in the project report. Um, and yeah, Mr. Chair, I think you're correct in bringing up the criteria you can consider. It it's those two, and then all, obviously.
There were a couple more.
Uh, meeting all of the required materials upfront for the site planner view.
Yeah.
Uh, health and safety is always a good one that applies to everything. Uh, and then detriment, just to make sure that the use of the land, the building is not going to be more detrimental to the community.
I just want to give as clean of a transcript to a court if it ever gets there as possible.
You know what I said? I did, I wanted to explain my. My vote.
Yeah, 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 that's it.
As did I, and I think you did too, but just. Want to make sure that we're all on the same page there. All right, sorry to interrupt you.
No, it's okay. Um, just some quick updates on some projects that my department's doing. Uh, so mixed-use bylaw, Saratoga District. Town council is actually going to have their first reading on Tuesday, October twenty-eighth. So basically, we have a draft. It's not finalized. It's going to be a draft that's probably going to change several times throughout the public hearing process. So I haven't shared that draft with you yet because I'd rather the board see it in their meeting packet before it becomes a public hearing. Public hearing, it's probably going to be continued several times and takes seven minutes. So that's coming up next Tuesday. All the council's going to do, they're having a look at the bylaw. They're just going to say. We want to open the public hearing, start doing that planning board, uh, like they always do. The uh, traffic and pedestrian survey reports, I'm actually halfway done with that. Certainly, I've conducted over the summer. We had about three hundred and sixty responses. Looking through the report right now, and I'm creating it as we speak. Uh, then lastly, last Thursday, October. Zoning consultant Barrett Planning Group gave a presentation to the bylaw review committee on the results of their zoning diagnostic and audit. It was a very productive discussion, and the group outlined next steps after the fact. I've actually included the full, the full report for everybody's convenience in your meeting packet if you want to take it with you and have. Up to you. Um, the group kind of agreed, two different types of things have to happen. The first is that there are several technical issues and legal issues that file that have to be addressed almost immediately. They kind of understood that they need the bylaw review committee, and they said that yes, those things definitely should be taken care of right away. And the way that they're going to present these recommendations to us is in a packet. This often when we consider, the first of which is how to address all those outstanding issues that have to be changed on the technical side. But then there's also the policy considerations of. You know, there's several policy questions the town and the community have to talk about with each other. They're going to give us suggestions on how to address those different things, but also looking for our guidance on how to shape that policy moving forward. So I'm going to talk with them and I meet with them again next Monday to to kind of figure out what that process is going to be. And their potential for a community meeting to kind of incorporate and discuss. Our policy moving forward should be in Eastlaw Meadow in relation to zoning. So you know, whenever you want to provide any comments, if you guys have the time to look through the report, please feel free to do so. Anything you send to me, I can give to the consultant, so they have it. Um, they're definitely looking for feedback from anybody on the zoning report. Um. They talk about a lot of different things, but they're doing it from like a higher level perspective and aren't really getting into the wounds too too much. Um, but they are fully aware of all the things that should be changed. So if there's something you think they're missing, chances are they've already looked at it. So, yep, uh, Mr. Chair, that's pretty much all I had. I don't know if there's any questions the board had for me or anything. About pressing.
I got a question for you.
Sure.
I live in a pre-existing non-conforming home. That was built in seventeen thirty-eight.
Yeah.
Can I come to the planning board to put a garage on? That would be, make it more non-conforming as a homeowner?
So you could, but you can't create any new non-conformities. So if the garage is being put on the building. And the garage is going into a setback in which it complies with, you're allowed to do that. But if the garage is on, say. If the building is five feet away from the property line facing the street. if the building is five feet away from the property line facing the street and you're, you have to be fifty feet from the street, can't put the garage in that area between the street and the road. But you can't put the garage on a different building. So for that petition that we just approved tonight.
It doesn't.
There's no setback at the back.
I got you.
Yeah, I got you.
A lot of need to you.
Yeah.
Any one.
But the other thing too is that, you know, the lock coverage is already exceeded. So they're not creating a new issue with the lock coverage.
Right.
The lock coverage has already been exceeded. So they're not creating anything new. They're just exacerbating the existing non-conformities. They're not creating anything new after the fact. So they still have those two, I guess you can call them unresolved zoning issues, right? But because they're not providing more detriment to the area and you guys agreed upon as such, that's a legitimate path for them to construct that building.
And that's actually fair use of the land and.
Yeah.
Stormy parking spaces that aren't needed.
And people with garages, if it's on a building that's not conforming and they put the garage on the side of the building in area where it would comply with the zoning. So say if the garage is on the left side of the house and it meets the setback, then you could put it there with a special permit. They call that a section six special permit because of four B A, that's a section outlaw.
Yeah, right.
So you get it. But yeah, no, that's totally legitimate. You just have to make sure it works for that recommendation.
I think I'll move instead.
I want to give compliments to whoever did all the sidewalks on Westwood and Maple Street. I think that project came out really, yeah.
It's quick.
Roll mapping.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, uh, so we got the funding. I, I applied for a grant through DOT to get the funding for that for half a million dollars. Yeah.
Yeah.
Bruce did a really good job coordinating all of that.
Yeah.
Uh, Bruce Fenn, D W Director. Yep, he did it quick.
It went quick.
Yeah, really quick.
Have a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.